Ladies and gentlemen, we're here again. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Little piece of trivia, I was in first grade when they added that extra phrase onto the, you probably remember, don't you? All right, consent agenda. We have four things on the consent agenda. I will take a motion to approve. Thank you, Barbara, second.
Seconded.
Colleen, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Patience. 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 That's okay. All right, we have. I'm trying to get my pieces together here. We have one, two, three, four. We need Nelson and Jamie to sit in for Neil and Bob. Oh, you actually remember now, yep, sorry. So we just need Nelson to sit in for Bob. You an alternate? Well, then you get to sit in for Neil.
Wonderful.
All right, we got a full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I'm not your real chairman, so just bear with me. All right. We are on to Starton Realty LLC. Continued review for consideration of final approval for a site plan for the addition of a gas station, convenience store, and drive-through coffee shop at the site of an existing car wash. The parcel is located at 376 DW Highway in the C2 General Commercial, Aqua for Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts. Tax map 4D hyphen 3, Lot 02, case planning board 202-22-40. This item has been continued from the November 15th and December 20th and January 17th and February 21st and March 21st and April 18th and June 6th, July 18th and the 23rd, 2023 Planning Board meetings. We've been dealing with this for a while, guys.
We have.
You want to take the floor and introduce yourself and?
Yes, hello again. Dave Frothingham from Wilcox and Barton representing Starton Realty. I apologize that I was unable to get the plans into the boards by the deadline. I was unable to take my plan before the deadline, so I couldn't get any kind of them. So at the end of the last meeting, it's kind of come down to the circulation around the building and the need for a bypass lane for the drive-through. So it was presented, you know, either we remove the drive-through and the coffee shop from the project or proceed with just the gas station, or we hold on to that and the board makes its decision. My client has chosen that, you know, to make this site viable for him. He needs both of these uses there. So I have made an attempt to hopefully alleviate some of the bypass issues. He and I discussed it at length. So what we are proposing to kind of give some additional space around the back of the building to provide some bypass method back there. So the building itself, the addition back there was narrowed. We didn't make it any longer, we just made it smaller. It's 800 square feet, about the smallest that we can get and to have the coffee shop function. What that did is allowed us more space right here at the corner. So there's clearly enough space there for a bypass lane, adding line striping to show where the, you know, the order window and the pickup window are and allowing for ample space here to get two cars through this area. We are proposing for this section right here at the top to stripe that off with a sign that says, "Do not block the driveway." And so that will be an open spot that will allow any vehicles that are in the car wash area to pass through and get out, as well as any vehicles back here to escape out through this way. Now, the reality of the functionality of this site is that you have two uses with different peaks. You've got a coffee shop where your peak is going to be early morning, mid-morning, and you've got the car wash where your peaks are going to be later in the day. So the chances of having a full queue for both are minimal. So this does provide additional, I'll call it, escape route of bypass through there. I also reworked the circulation through the site because there were some comments about a emergency vehicle not being able to, when they go through, having issues with overhanging curbs. I colored this drawing so it's easier to see. Same vehicle, same path, just tweaked it. There was some overhang here on this curb, showing that there's plenty of space all the way around the back. We now have more than enough space getting around here because we gained some distance when we made the building narrower and then coming out. We still have to circulate around the island again to get out, but we've got lanes that are 24-plus feet wide all the way around this. So there shouldn't be any issue with maneuvering large vehicles in and out of the site, including emergency vehicles. So that's, I mean. And again, the fire chief has not seen this before. I wasn't able to get it in in time, but the board was pretty clear. So if this alleviates the concerns, then that's great. And we hope for a conditional approval pending the fire chief's review. If it doesn't and you're still not going to allow the coffee shop use on the site, I guess that's the way it's going to be.
At this point, I think, Colleen, we open it up with public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes, we will do so. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against, please approach the microphone. Identify yourself and let us know what you think.
Hi, my name is Bill Fallon, Merrimack Drive. Been a resident of Merrimack 26 years. First off, you know, I think this is putting 50 pounds of manure in a five-pound bag, the whole thing. But just today, I was up in Brown Avenue, Manchester, and they had, before COVID, they had five gas stations, or four, I think. One of them was renovated during the pandemic. The other three are boarded up and abandoned. We also, Merrimack, we have an abandoned gas station down by Budweiser. And at exit 11, well, I don't know what, are they putting a gas station in there, the new one? So they're putting a convenience store and a gas station there. I just have a feeling that he won't be able to compete. And with the electric cars coming in and things, in three to five years or maybe even 10 or 20 years, he'll be out of business and we'll be stuck with an abandoned boarded-up building.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else to speak for or against? I will close the public hearing. Planning board members. Nelson. Mike?
Mike, John.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask about the, I missed the last discussion of this. It was done in July, I believe. But I didn't hear any talk tonight about the screening on the south side of the site. We had talked at different times about the invisibility of making any plantings there and we had talked about maybe a fence that would.
Yep, we talked about that at the last meeting and we agreed to provide additional plantings or a fence along there to provide that screening.
Well, which is, what's it going to be?
Given the space, it will likely be a fence back and along between the buildings back here. And then as we have more space up front, a few additional plantings there.
They're not shown on the plan, though.
Right, I wasn't going to have the landscape architect change that if we're dead in the water with the.
So that can be subject to?
That can be, yeah, we'll accept the condition of that and we agreed to that last time to provide that.
It'll have to be. Mr. Men, Molly, did you want to say something?
John?
I just wanted to make the comment from our standpoint on the fire department is we have not seen these new plans at all, so we have not had any chance to review them. And at this point, I cannot comment for or against them until I actually have a set of plans that I can actually review and put a template on it.
We removed about three feet from the building, so we did open that back corner up.
I believe you, but I have not.
Yeah, I understand.
John, if we approve this tonight, subject to the fire department agreeing to the plans, would that be acceptable to you?
As long as that is a condition of approval, yes, I would be fine.
Okay, all right. I do have to commend the applicant for listening to us last month and saying, okay, here's how it. And I understand that there are things that they need to do for their business to make it work. And that's why we suggested last month for you to go back to talk to them and say, what do you need to do and how do you make it work after listening to us? And I think you have listened to us, so I commend you for that.
Thank you.
All right, Barbara?
So just a question. Seeing how we're waiting on the fire department review and we are giving a conditional approval anyways, because what we do is conditional approvals, how is that going to work? So what if fire says no, we still don't have enough room back there?
Then it isn't approved.
Okay, as long as that's stipulated very clearly.
Is that correctly?
I believe so. If they can't meet the criteria and they aren't able to fulfill their conditions, then they may have to come back to the board and revise their plans. I believe that must be the next step.
And you may need to get rid of the drive-through again. But if you can't meet the fire department conditions, you're going to be back talking to us?
Yep, we understand that.
Okay. Barb, is that okay?
And what's the turnaround time on that? I'm sorry.
Honestly, it depends on how fast I can get the plans and how fast I can review them, but it would be, it would probably definitely be before the next meeting.
It doesn't matter to us because we're going to do, if everybody agrees, conditional approval, unless we deny it. But if we do conditional approval, then it's up to them as to how fast they can do this and how fast they can comply with what fire wants. And if they can't do it for six months, then they're going to be sitting there for six months. So it's up to them.
We're ready to print the plans and send them back.
All right, having closed the public hearing, having heard from those in the planning board.
Wait, I still have a question.
Sure, I'm sorry, Jamie.
Right, now, so where the drive-through sign is there, so I get that you have this bypass, but how is that really designated to keep then people from blocking that?
So it's similar to what happens at intersections, especially light.
Are you, Jamie, talking about the striped places there right on the corner? Okay, thank you.
Painted, it's basically a painted stripe on the ground that's designated as a no-stopping, standing, parking area, along with a sign to do that. And it functions similar to an intersection where you've got an existing driveway that's too close to a light and they'll often patch the road with a sign that says, you know, "Don't block the driveway."
There is a sign there?
That we are proposing to put a sign there that says, "Don't block the driveway."
That's not on the plan?
It's right here.
Is that what that says?
Yep, it's a 24-by-24 sign to don't block the driveway.
Okay, all right.
And it does rely on people.
Being polite and doing that reading.
Yep.
School bus says stop, please stop.
And we could add a stop sign there, too. Yep, yeah. Put "Do not block drive" and a "Stop" right there to kind of reinforce that.
"Don't block the drive," I think is sufficient, so. Anything else?
Yeah, I like the stop sign, something that really pulls out because I think people are not going to pay attention and pull through that and then it's going to be.
If the stop sign is, then yes.
Yep. Anything else?
Well, paint it on the ground, too.
They're going to hire a detail to stand there and say. Anybody else with comments? John, you're okay?
Yep.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to find that with granted waivers and the proposed conditions of approval, including subject to the screening of the fire department, subject to, no, the approval of the fire department, screening and fence implantings, and a stop sign with signage on the drive as well, that with all that, the site plan application meets applicable regulatory requirements and further to grant conditional final approval to the site plan subject to the recommended conditions of approval presented by the staff and the board dated July 14, 2023.
Second? Barb, thank you. I think that was Barb. Colleen, we good? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for listening to us and.
Thank you for your feedback. We really appreciate it.
Not always do people listen to us, but you did this this time and you've been successful, so thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
We are on to number four on our agenda. This is TC Boston Development, Inc., applicant, and TRI TCC 50 RMP LLC. Lots of initials there. Consideration of an amendment to a previously approved site plan to waive the requirements of Section 3.02 of the Site Plan Regulations, which requires all proposed utilities to be constructed underground. The parcel is located 50 Robert Milligan Parkway in the I-1 industrial and the Aqua for Conservation Districts, tax map 2D, Lot 078, case number, planning board 2023-22. Applicant.
Good evening. For the record, Austin Turner with Bowler. We are the land development and civil engineering consultants working on this project. So some time ago, this board or a version of it had granted us approval, obviously, conditional approval, which we satisfied those conditions. That building, for those who may not be familiar, is very much under construction right now and it looks and feels kind of like you could occupy it pretty soon. So what we've been doing is working with your team here in town, as well as Eversource, on the power. And it's been months of discussion and deliberation with the folks over Eversource, trying to find kind of a harmonization point, if you will, in how they wanted to supply power to the building. Working pretty diligently with your site plan review requirements to put those utilities underground. What Eversource identified was a couple of pretty significant upgrades that they wanted to construct or have the applicant construct in Robert Milligan Parkway. All of those alternatives we found would be potentially disruptive or likely disruptive to the power supply for the residences, the businesses along that corridor, not the least of which would be the FAA facility. We looked at a number of different ways to bring power into the property. Ultimately, what has.
Hold on just a minute.
Sure.
Merrimack TV. Do we have? Can we show plans here and here?
I can bring that up, sure.
I thought she was trying to do it.
He showed us something because she didn't think he was going to do it.
Well, I can do it. I was just giving it back.
We've got two people here, between the two of them, I think we can get it on back here. Can we get it on? Yes.
Yeah, it's coming.
Not yet. Okay, great, thank you. Okay. I just wanted people to be able to see.
So this will be the aerial, I'll give you some context for it. So this is the project, very much under construction. This aerial was taken a couple of months ago. You can see the building footprint, actually. This is Robert Milligan Parkway right here. And it goes out to Route 3 or Old Route 3 right there. So what we've been looking at with Eversource and the team here is how does Eversource want to supply power here? Their original suggestion was some pretty significant infrastructure upgrades in Robert Milligan Parkway. Underground, new vaults, new manholes, very sizable, expensive, lengthy process. That was also said that there's likely to be a disruption of power to facilities nearby so that they could upgrade their infrastructure.
Where's the FAA center on this?
I believe it's right, is that it, right there?
Is that it right there?
I think it's just off Locust, right? Yep, so right there, right there, yep. So that facility obviously gets power from the existing infrastructure in Robert Milligan Parkway. Eversource had said, hey, we want to upgrade that, so help us do it, which we were working on. It became pretty clear fairly quickly in that conversation that wasn't feasible. Power disruption is a big thing, particularly for the FAA. The extensive utility infrastructure they wanted to install. Spent months working on this with them. What we're seeking respectfully from the board tonight is a waiver of the requirement to put the power underground for all the reasons that I mentioned. What we would like to do is extend three-phase power above ground from the infrastructure located on Old Route 3 down Robert Milligan Parkway to the point at which it intersects with the property. This driveway is on the private property here. At this point, the utility service would be underground. In fact, the electrical infrastructure to service the building is installed to the right-of-way here. We've been trying to untangle the, how do we get power from the road to the property? And like I said, that has proven to be fairly complicated. So Eversource's solution to maintain power to the nearby businesses and have it not become a massive infrastructure construction project is to run three-phase power above ground on Robert Milligan Parkway. The reason for the waiver request is that there's a provision in the Site Plan Review Regulations which says all proposed utilities shall be underground. What we understand in working with your team in town is that in circumstances like this, which are a bit unique, there is some precedent for these, provided the circumstances justify. We believe that they, kind of a unique circumstance, would justify the waiver, obviously. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, any things you want me to explore further. More than happy to have that conversation.
Before we open the public hearing, I want to clarify a couple of things that don't make sense to me. I don't know about the rest of the board. Right now, we have power coming underground to that roundabout. Is that correct?
There is infrastructure in the road right now, correct, yep.
So everybody there right now has sufficient power from the underground conduits?
That's my understanding.
So if we extend underground power from those conduits on the roundabout to our site, why would there be any impact on the surrounding sites?
So it's a good question. So Eversource is telling us in order to service this property, they would need to upgrade that entire corridor from where it connects into the main line out in Route 3 all the way to the property.
All right.
So they would need to upgrade that entire service to accommodate this project, but then also, obviously, the needs of what is currently.
And they can't do it via the underground?
Not without a substantial utility infrastructure project. They need to upgrade that entire line and it's been on their radar for a little while. This was the thing that kind of tipped it over the.
So whether you upgrade the entire line underground or above ground, what's the difference?
So the difference is there is a substantial amount of utility infrastructure located in Robert Milligan Parkway now. There's a duct bank for all the electrical workers in there. They want that to stay. Water, drainage, sewer, everything. You're having to not only put in that, another very, very sizable duct bank. It's frankly substantially larger than what exists today. There's not room without.
Larger what?
Duct bank where all the cables would be coming through. It's a big concrete box in the ground where all the electrical service would be pulled through. There's not, physically, there's not enough room to accommodate that system underground right now without basically redoing.
In the conduits that are there now?
Correct, that system needs to be upgraded. And then on top of that, it would have to fit in that road where all the existing utility infrastructure is. It's likely there's telephone duct banks in there, which are fairly sizable, that you wouldn't just be touching the electrical, you'd be touching a lot, if not all, of the utilities in that road. So it becomes a massive, massive undertaking.
What, Colleen, go ahead.
If, regardless, does the infrastructure need to be updated with or without above ground?
They're saying it can accommodate what's there today, but if all of a sudden we're going to put this draw on the system, then it kind of just pushes it to a point. It's kind of, I wouldn't say it's marginal now, but it's.
Is it something they're going to have to address down the road anyways?
Right now, they don't think so, given if nothing changes about what's occupying the loads. If you put something else on it, they may have to consider that again.
Your property comes south and is very close to Al Paul Lane.
Correct, yep. Al Paul Lane, well, the paper version of Al Paul Lane exists along the reservoir.
Well, Al Paul Lane comes down from DW, has overhead wires, and through a short easement goes to your property. Why can't you bring power to your property from Al Paul Lane instead of coming from the roundabout that involves all of these other properties?
So just for clarification, I'll answer your question, but the the power that we'd be bringing down Robert Milligan Parkway would be entirely located in the right-of-way for Robert Milligan Parkway. It wouldn't be crossing any private properties.
Understand.
Yep. So we did, we did explore the potential to bring private electric service through Al Paul Lane. It's complicated in its own right. One, there's a number of different property rights that we'd have to try and secure in there.
I believe there's town easement from Al Paul Lane to your property that you wouldn't have to deal with private property?
Not entirely. So we've kind of explored, like I said, there's been months of research that we've been going into this. Part of the property we would need to cross is currently controlled by Penetra Water Works. The property that immediately abuts us and which the poles would have to be located on is controlled by Penetra Water Works.
And we don't have an easement through there?
Not that we've been able to uncover. And secondarily, the access through there isn't, Al Paul Lane, that goes as more of a trail through the woods. It's not really an improved road. It's kind of a little path, if you will. You'd have to do substantial work to make it suitable to accommodate overhead wires, some of which is located, it almost interfaces directly with the reservoir itself. It's immediately adjacent to it.
But you don't need a road to put in poles. I mean, we've got transmission wires all over the town and everywhere else that doesn't have a road under them that you could put poles along that easement much easier than you could taking, put poles all along Robert Milligan Parkway and dropping underground stuff from the roundabout to where you're going. It seems like a much shorter route and much easier route.
It's not. I can see that on the surface. We've explored this with Eversource for a number of months. Everything we've looked at just in terms of property rights, the ability to do that, just if you're looking at it strictly from a property perspective, it involves a number of private landholders that makes that incredibly complicated. And two, logistically, Eversource is telling us that that is a far more expensive proposition to try and weave that through Al Paul Lane to connect into the infrastructure, which is how ultimately comes from Route 3, and then bring it through the woods and kind of cut in along the reservoir, which is partially located on private property that we don't have control over. So we did explore that. So we did explore that. We looked at it fairly extensively with them. Ultimately ruled it out because it was, became apparent through those conversations that it was substantially more complicated. The property acquisitions became very tangly and it became, it was exorbitantly more expensive on top of all that than the Robert Milligan Parkway alternative.
You've explored it with Eversource, but have you explored it with DPW?
Yes. That was mentioned, it was mentioned in our first meeting with, in fact, Dawn was the one who suggested that as a potential alternative.
And she feels that that is a viable alternative.
I can assure you that it is not from Eversource's perspective as well as ours. There's land rights in there. There's Eversource.
Eversource is not our town and we represent our town.
Oh, I understand. And I'm not, I don't mean, I'm not trying this to be combative. I'm just telling you that we've had many, many conversations about this with the whole. Yes, and our team in terms of the ability to access and cross private property. It's not, it's not a feasible alternative.
DPW thinks it is.
I can appreciate, I can appreciate their stance. And again, I'm not saying this to be argumentative. I've worked with Dawn quite a bit and I respect her very much. I don't think she's had the benefit of all of those very, very granular conversations we've had. So superficially, I can absolutely understand how that may on the surface look like a feasible alternative. When you start kind of peeling back the onion, so to speak, it becomes very clear very quickly that it's a far more complicated option and frankly, not feasible option.
Okay, so let's go away from that option and let's go back to Robert Milligan and why can't you or Eversource, which is not our customers, put these wires underground?
So, so again, there is existing infrastructure underground in Robert Milligan Parkway. It generally runs along this shoulder here, kind of the, I call it the south side. In order for them to maintain that power underground from the Route Three down Robert Milligan Parkway and then interconnect with the services that we've stubbed to the right-of-way boundary with Robert Milligan Parkway, that infrastructure would get abandoned in place and the new infrastructure would have to be installed. Underground, it's substantially larger.
You can't expand what's already underground?
Not, so I'm not an electrical engineer.
Neither am I.
Right. And they've informed us that in order for them to accomplish what we would need from a power supply standpoint, they would have to upgrade the entire service substantially from the road to the property by way of all new infrastructure.
Why didn't they do this knowing that this property was going to be developed down at the end here? Why didn't they build the infrastructure there in the first place to accommodate the entire property? Instead of coming back to us later saying, oh gee, poor us, we can't do this when they should have done it in the first place?
Well, I don't know. That's a question that I can answer necessarily. And that infrastructure may have been there for a little while. So, you know, just.
But it's the development that's been there and if you have to have underground for the entire development, then I would think you would build the infrastructure from DW to accommodate the entire. Barb, you have con?
Comments and questions? First of all, I'm not worried about the FAA. The FAA has alternative power sources because they can't afford to go down. So they already have taken care of that issue. The only people that would really be affected based on that outlet would be the RV campers in. And that is up for Eversource to figure out how do they remain power, retain power while they're doing the work. But as far as I'm concerned, we have that regulation for a reason. And this is Eversource's problem. Unfortunately, whether it was you or whether it was some other organization that came in and developed that lot, we would still be having the same discussion because Eversource, you said it yourself, it's on their list of things to do in the future. Well, the future has arrived.
Further comments? If not, I'm going to.
Does the cost come back to this company or does the cost go to Eversource?
Comes back to the applicant. So Eversource is suggesting, and I mean, it's is a very, very significant utility infrastructure upgrade that they're essentially saying, you know, hey, if you want to do it, you need to pay for that upgrade and it's benefiting you, yes, but it benefits everybody else too. And it's being, the cost of it being borne solely by, you know, this landowner being the last to come in, so to speak. Frankly, I don't know that that's fair.
I guess too, what I would like to see is, you know, documentation from Eversource of exactly what are the different different routes and the different costs and the different timelines. I understand that you've been in conversation, but conversations sometimes change when they get on paper. So I'd like to see like the real information of what it is going to cost and what the timeline is and stuff like that from Eversource.
Okay, so I'm inferring here, but I think the board might be suggesting is that I can go see what additional information I can come up with to provide some support, if you will, to what we've been talking about tonight and kind of wrap some more context around that. And that might be something that, you know, I'd welcome perhaps continuance to the next hearing. I will say, you know, if people are familiar with that property, we've been working on this power thing for a long time. We're getting close to the event horizon where obviously we need to light that building up. So it's something we're going to have to try and work through expeditiously. I can appreciate where the planning board's coming from and I'm happy to get as much new information as I can. I would just respectfully ask that we try to be a bit timely with how we're proceeding, provided I can get you the information as quickly as possible.
So if we continue this, we can go to which meeting, Colleen?
I'm not sure. The next meeting is September 5th. I'm not sure.
Have notice for that, do we?
What do you mean? I'm sorry.
We don't have time for notice for that, do we?
I don't think we would have to notice.
Okay.
But I mean, I can ask Tim to see. I'll shoot him a text now to see if it's okay if they submit something in addition to for that.
I just really am bothered by the fact that we have a large development here. And Eversource came in and kind of said, oh, well, we're just putting the bare minimum to get to where we need to get right now, but we're not going to think about the rest of the development? I have a problem with Eversource doing that.
So I can appreciate that perception. I'm not suggesting that you're wrong necessarily. I think in fairness to Eversource, I don't know how old that infrastructure is in the road and if they were contemplating, you know, maybe it's 30 years old, for example. I don't know. I'm saying that for our numbers. It might be hard to forecast what was happening here. I understand where you're coming from with the power needs. Infrastructure like this, it's not unusual for it to have to be upgraded over time. I don't know how much one could reasonably forecast, but I can appreciate, I can appreciate the sentiment. I don't know that it falls squarely on them for lack of foresight necessarily.
Well, I'm, I have to be convinced of that because that's what I'm seeing.
Sure. So I think, I think part of that conversation is me getting you some more information. Let me talk to the team, the folks over at Eversource and.
And you've heard us, so.
Yeah, very much so.
Yeah, just when you put that together for us, also if you could include, because essentially Campers Inn is a big warehouse. If you've ever been in there. And, you know, they've got some external power needs on the lot, but, you know, essentially it's a big warehouse. So what is the difference between your power need and their power need? And, you know, if Eversource can say, you know, is it wattage? Is it kilowatt? I don't know. But what's the big, what's the difference? Because I can tell you FAA is pulling some watts too, so.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop here for just a minute and I want to open a public hearing. That if there are people in the audience who would like to weigh in, we've heard from the planning board, but I'd like to weigh in on anybody. Gentlemen, if you have anything to say, pro or con with this, or have questions, please step up to the mic. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I think we're asking to continue this to the September 5th.
If that's the next available hearing, I would be comfortable continuing to September 5th and if something changes, we can.
Are we safe for going?
September 19th would be the next one after September 5th, but we can, I think we can do September 5th and then if not, we can request a continuation.
All right, let's continue to September 5th for tonight's.
Sorry. In the text message I just received from Tim, the board, that Tim has had meetings with the state and the developer and the state is having no luck with Eversource either on this matter as well. So Tim's been involved, Dawn's been involved, Robert's been involved, Eversource, obviously.
Let's continue this to the September 5th meeting. I will entertain a motion.
So moved, man.
Thank you, Nelson. Jamie? All in favor? Be in touch with community development and see what we can work out.
Absolutely. And thank you very much for the discussion tonight. I appreciate it. We'll come back with some more information.
Like to make it work.
Of course. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, please, what Colleen just read from Tim, can we have that included in the minutes?
Yes.
Thank you.
What did she ask to be included?
Colleen texted Tim.
All of that.
For advice and we want his response included in our minutes.
Right. Good idea.
All right. Colt Refining Incorporated and King Herrick LLC and Evan Realty LLC owners. Conceptual discussion regarding a proposal to construct a 97,600 square foot light industrial facility with associated site improvements. The parcels are located to 12A Star Drive, Herrick Street and King Street in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 3D hyphen 1, lots 2 hyphen 1 and 20 hyphen 1 and tax map 3D hyphen 2, lot 20 hyphen 2, case number, planning board 2023 hyphen 21. You're all over the place with these lots, huh?
Yes.
Okay. You have the floor.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair.
Is your mic on?
Members of.
Should be bright green.
Merrimack, yes. Members of Merrimack Planning Board, Jason Hill with TF Moran, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. This is a conceptual hearing for a project for Colt Refining, which is located and shown here on the, if you're not familiar, this is just north of the Anheuser-Busch plant. Accessed by Star Drive. It's in an industrial area, in an industrial zone. And it involves three properties, map 3D 1, 2 dash 1, 3D 1, 20 dash 1, which are properties to the west and north of the existing facility. And map 3D 2, 20 dash 1. So this project would involve consolidating those properties and constructing the new 97,600 square foot light industrial facility for Colt Refining. These are industrial one-zone properties. It's in the Aquifer Protection District. They're serviced by Public Water and Sewer. And so I'm just going to give you a brief outline of things and then my purpose is to just hear any comments or concerns about the plans that we've produced so that we can get them incorporated into our site plans in the middle, which we look to be making, you know, in the coming months. So this coal refining is primarily two operations occur at the existing facility, which would be expanded in this new project. It's recycling and refining. This is an e-scrap dismantling company. They break down electronic products, supply raw material to various aluminum mills, copper mills, smelters and its own Merrimack refining operations, which are also located in the existing building. And then the services provided by Colt are manual, also manual disassembly, automated mechanical shredding, universal waste handling, those type of recycling operations. But those, so this project, here's an aerial view of the site. The building is in the center here. That's their existing facility, which I think is around 50 to 60K. We have Herrick Drive, which is a local dead-end road running off of the DW Highway. This is just north of the Anheuser-Busch facility. This is a zoomed-in view of the existing facility with the access coming off of Star Drive to the south, the trucking loading area in the rear. The railroad tracks run to the east and there's a zoomed-in view, overhead view of the site and the current operations. Here's the view of the property. The existing driveway on Star Drive looking north. The existing Colt Refining is behind this, this existing building in the foreground. It's back here. So this is the proposed access for the new facility as well as we'd be providing another access point to the new facility that I'll review in a minute.
What is the building to the west of you there?
This is a crane company. And the building to the, this is a vacant, I don't know the historical use other than it's an industrial facility, but that's a crane company to the west. Another picture, this is the existing Colt Refining front facade, main entry sequence and parking at 12A Star Drive. There's a, the trucking is in the rear of the building. So this is your front entry sequence of the existing facility. Let's skip these pictures and go, here's a conceptual plan, which you should have in your packages, showing the existing facility in this area. Existing facility at the south and then the proposed expansion to the north, including the new facility here, the parking parking area to the north and to the west and then a truck, trailer storage area to the west of the site. And then a share, this is the new loading area for the new building would be on the south, south end of the building. It mirrors the existing loading area and they'll share basically the circulation for the loading, the loading docks is a shared circulation, keeping all the truck activity where it currently exists in the center of the site. This neighborhood is primarily industrial. There's a few, couple of single-family residents, but it's industrial and there's auto bodies in the area of Herrick Street. So just finishing up on my this proposed, the proposed location of the new driveway for, which would be only for staff and not for the trucking. The trucking will be proposed to utilize the existing truck access point. But this would be a new staff entry off of Herrick Drive in this location. It's coming down to the east. That would be the primary access for staff. This is a picture of that area. Just trying to zoom in on this one here. This is the proposed. Sorry.
Too many pictures.
I know. But pictures with a thousand words.
Absolutely.
So here is Herrick Street looking north. Route Three is over here. So this is an abandoned business to the left of the parking lot. And so the proposed driveway location would be roughly in this vicinity. There's no existing curb cuts for proposing the curb cut in that location on Herrick Street. It's anticipated, well, let me just skip through and let you ask some of the questions. So I mentioned the truck loading area. So we're classifying the parking for this use as a warehouse. Warehouse land use, which requires approximately 80 spaces to 90 spaces for the proposed building program. That's the most, given the nature of the industry here, it's the most appropriate use based on the anticipated, you know, volume of employees. So and the parking aisle would be to the north of the new building. And so finally, going to finish walking through the photographs. This is a picture of King Street, which is a dead end. The project is at the back. There's a gate here in the existing condition. And so the project, that's a shed, this is a shed in the back that's on the subject property. And so the project, that's a shed, th- this is a shed in the back that's on the subject property, it's in a, it's a ta- it's basically falling over, and it would be demolished as these properties are currently vacant, and there'd be, so there's no proposed connection from King Street to the project, uh, but this is just a local, uh, neighborhood in the vicinity of the project. This is a view from the northern abutter.
Jason, go back one, please. In front of that white station wagon, there's a building. What's that?
It's abandoned, uh, or vacant, excuse me. I don't know what the, the former use was of that property. Maybe some type of office space.
Uh, it used to be a water testing facility, water testing company.
Thanks, John. Okay, go ahead.
So this is a view from the north. If you're, um, up here on the site plan, from the northern, there's a testing, um, it's called Space, um, something to do with Space Test.
Not SpaceX.
No, but it's a, it's a ta- some type of a industrial or office used to the north, and, um, in this area, and this is just a view of this, the site is in the background here, from the edge of that storage, gravel storage area in the back. So going back to the site plan, we've discussed the, the overall circulation, with the access coming from Herrick Street, truck access from Star, shared loading area, driveway full circulation around the building with, um, two-way drive, two-way parking, ninety-degree stalls, and then, um, here is a plan, finally, I didn't submit this. There's, um, some minor wetland buffer impacts that are shown, the green areas here are wetlands. And, uh, red line's a fif- uh, the twenty-five-foot buffer. And the, um, outer line, it's a blue line, but that's the fifth, the forty-foot structure setback. Right now, I've got some parking, some, excuse me, some driveways encroaching on that, um, which I believe would, is a question for the board, and if they can't be answered tonight, I'll, I can handle it with Tim and his staff. The need for a special use permit to do, um, to do the park, the driveway with, and the truck, uh, trailer storage within those areas. And then the pink areas are areas I'm temporarily grading the ground within the forty-foot wetland, excuse me, the twenty-five-foot buffer area to those wetlands. So there's two potential relief, uh, no, you know, relief waivers slash CUP slash ZBA, that I'm anticipating, and I believe it can all be done through the planning board process. So I'm looking for feedback on that. At that point, that's the only impacts that we have to any of these wetlands resource areas. This is just a grading plan that hasn't been submitted, but we've, are in the design review process. So, um, we're looking for occupancy by the end of twenty-four. So we don't have a, um, so it's a fairly short timeframe to get my plans done and get them approved, and I'm, I'm going and field digging. Uh, I'm just giving you a, 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 a vision of the timing of this, this, this project. And the need of the project is for, uh, just expansion, future expansion of the Colt Refining Group. And like I said, the use of this would be for the continued expansion of the existing recycling and processing operations.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to go to public hearing first, and see if there, either of the gentlemen here in the audience wanna speak? Nope, nope. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and planning board, your chance, Nelson.
Can you, can you tell us a little bit more about refining? Wh- what does it entail?
What does Colt do?
Yeah, what do they, do they do? Are they just?
Yeah, um, so they take, uh, it's a process, including both manual and this machine-assisted, mechanical shredding of met- precious metals and other medical meta- metal products, or, um, precious metal products, uh, for the purpose of, uh, reusing or, um, what's the word, recycling those into future goods, so.
Where do the, where do, where does the product come from?
It gets trucked in from various.
What kind of facilities?
Different, like, you could say, mo- uh, cellphone, you know, provide self, old cellphone type of, uh, users. There's different local, um, recycling yards and metal, uh, um.
So essentially, recycling yards is where you're getting your product from.
And they truck it to this facility where it's, uh, disassembled, refined, and then it's trucked back out and distributed to, uh, end, end users.
Wh- what is that refining process? Does it involve furnaces? Does it involve heating, uh, gas emissions?
Yeah, there's some, there's a lot of it's sorting and packing, secure data destruction as well. Um, refurbishing, uh, metals that have been used in various goods, like from computers, chips, like this, taking some of the circuitry and the, uh, metals that are used in the circuitry out of it, and reprocessing those and redistributing those, or recycling those, depending on the, um.
Well, I wanna get it, what this reprocessing means. Uh, are, are there furnaces involved? Is there, are there gas emissions?
Some, there's some mechanical, um, mach- machinery. The specific use of, of like a furnace, I'm not familiar with, so I'll have to get you more feedback.
I think I'd like to know more.
I know there's more me- there's mechanical and machinery, and some processing that's done. But I do know that there's no, um, there's no, there's wet industrial processing is what, how they term it. There's no industrial wastewater discharge from the operations in the building. The industrial wastewater from the operations is stored in drums and it's hauled off-site. So there is industrial wastewater created, but it's not discharged.
Air, air discharge would also be a concern.
Yeah. We'll take note of that.
Barb?
Yeah, just to expound on that a little bit more. So it's not only the air discharge, but also any of the chemicals that are being stored in drums, where are they being stored, inside, outside? What are the chemical hazards involved? Because you've got residential backing right up into your area. So, we've got houses there. So I really wanna know, what are the chemicals you're using within the processing? What are the byproducts of that? How are they stored? And what, how are they contained?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Anybody else? Comments?
Yeah, I do. Well, my first thought, and, and so, and I could be wrong, so I think getting the information would be really helpful, is like when we did the rotary, and everybody turned everything in, the recycling, yeah, all of the, I mean, I think probably it's a lot more lucrative for all of the co- old computers and, and phones and stuff like that, so that may be, um, kind of what it is. So I think finding out the information of exactly what it is, like Nelson said, and, and like.
What are they doing with it?
Yeah.
Colleen, staff, have anything else?
Um, I don't believe so, and other than what was mentioned in the memo, things like, um, there was, I believe it was King Street, they had, um, an easement, or, uh, they would have to abandon a part of the road, the turnaround, stuff like that. Maybe that might have been Herrick, I forget.
I meant to mention that, and so that's a critical, and it was pr- discussed preliminarily with town staff a month, uh, recently. So there's a, a turnaround easement that benefits the town off of, uh, King Street. It's shown, you can see the circle, and that's, this drops a bunch. The ground falls ten to twenty feet.
That has to be a damn.
Would that be abandoned or extinguished? And, um, but preliminary through local staff, that felt wasn't big prob- wasn't problematic. It was suggested that, um, we would handle that via select board post as a condition of approval, uh, unless there was any, uh, so that was the, the way that we were, that was.
And, and you're posting parking right there, so that's gonna prevent anything from there, so we handle that.
Yeah, so we have a building footprint inside of it, and the park, the driveway, that would require that extinguishment of that, um, turnaround easement.
John, if I have any issue with hazardous or disposal or anything else?
We've, um, been dealing with Colt Refining for many years, and they're actually, um, a fairly, they're a very good, um, customer, basically, if you wanna call it that. We haven't had any problems with them.
Good to hear. That, that goes a long ways for you. Anything else? We're doing, Nelson?
I'd like to ask a little bit more about the abandoned cul-de-sac. I didn't notice it at first. But, uh, that's, uh, that was King Street?
Yes.
And is King Street still in existence?
It is.
What is going to?
There are people there. There's residential there.
Yeah, well, if, are they using that as a turnaround? I mean.
It actually drops, there's a gate, right, basically on the property line.
Get to there.
Okay, the gate was up there. Okay, that he shows.
About ten to twenty vertical feet into a, the site's essentially like a low spot. So there's no, it's just a dead end with no turnaround.
So we're gonna change that, that would be a change that we would have to make.
A deed, a deed issue.
Yeah, it would be to go through the select board with two hearings to, um, have them accept that as an extinguishment of that.
Yeah, okay.
That easement.
That's easy.
Okay, I missed that first time around. Thank you.
Anything else?
There's some existing drainage easements that benefit the town that were not impacting, uh, just in this vicinity of the site.
Is your mic still on?
Yes.
Pull, pull a little closer. Thank you.
They can't hear you in the back.
Sorry about that.
I, I get the waves in the back saying.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from planning board? Jamie?
Yeah, so I had some questions in regards to trying to figure out. So Herrick Street, right, is the one, and then you said that that's just gonna be for, um, personnel, like for office people, like no trucking is gonna be going in through there, correct?
That's correct.
And then?
No, no trucking, meaning the large.
Right.
I would leave that open for, like FedEx deliveries.
Okay. And that's, I guess my question was, is because, like, getting emergency vehicles in there, they would be coming in, I'm thinking through Star, but would there be access for them out through there, or there as well, or is that gonna be too narrow then, that it's just?
No, that'll be a full width, twenty-four-foot driveway, ungated, full access. So the fire, uh, emergency vehicles will have two points of access. One, the existing twelve A, the existing Star Drive, and the new Herrick Drive. And I would design the pavement, right, you know, the entry intersection to accommodate, you know, the Meramec FD apparatus. Provide a template plan for you all, how the circulation works.
Okay, and, um, as far as timeline, like, when would trucks be coming in and, and doing deliveries and such? Because there is like this parking, and everything is right along where those houses are, and just kind of, just from my understanding, what, is that gonna be like after hours, evenings, or is it just during the day? Like, what is that?
The trucking deliveries will take place in the existing.
Okay.
Um, loading area. It's gonna be expanded to accommodate the new loading, where they'll be facing each other. And those deliveries come very, there's no peak, like, uh, like you have with, um, you know, commuter traffic. It's only, um, we estimated, you know, one or two trucks during the peak hour, like the morning rush.
Jason, as I understand, there's no residential abutting the semi-access. They're up, they're up on King Street.
Correct. The nearest residential is this point here.
Okay.
It's on the north end of the dead end.
Right.
So we're actually, that's one of the basis of design, is to, to basically keep the trucking where it currently exists. That's gonna be the noisiest, and even though it's not frequent, it's, they get several truckloads a day or more. Uh, they don't come, uh, you know, so the trucking will occur basically where it cur- it currently exists, in the center of the site. Um, this truck storage, that, this is just for trailer drops until they get picked up. This, you can see that they're storing them now here, in the middle, trailer store. So this is just a dedicated zone, free from the loading area, circulation for trailer drops, empty trailers, um, that get utilized for customer pickups and what have you. Uh, so there's thirty trailer spaces, which is needed for programmatic purposes, and that'll be used, this will be used between both facilities, this truck, trucking, uh, truck, trailer storage area. And then this would just be the staff use, uh, along this driveway. It's not a high-traffic, uh, you know.
Typical business hours.
That ought to get back to hours of operation, but turn the, for, for, um, business for their peak morning commute, you know, we're talking like sixty-ish cars coming, cu- employees. You know, it's one per minute, i- you know, during that peak hour. There's really no effect, we've found that we've done.
You, you'll have that with the, the site plan, yeah.
So that, that's basically, uh, consistent with the background ra- rate of growth, that's assumed year to year over, uh, this, this type of a industrial, commercial property. So we don't think there's any, um, it's foresee any issues with any traffic at, you know, here, uh, from this project. We'll submit the paperwork for your all's review during the fin- next step.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, we're good? All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate the presentation, and you've heard feedback, and you take it for what it's worth, and we look forward to seeing you in the future.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the feedback. We'll have, uh, more concrete answers for you on that, um, when I see you next time.
Thank you.
Moving right along. Item number six is continued public hearing. Zoning ordinance amendments, as referred by the town council, propose the repeal of section two point oh, two point four point D, capital D, mixed-use developments permitted in the I-1 district of, by conditional use permit, and the correction of section numbers in the remainder of section two point oh, two point four. This item is continued from July eighteenth, planning board meeting. What are your feelings?
This is continued right until the September fifth?
Okay, so, so I am, I am accepting a motion to continue the public hearing to the Septem- Do I need to open the public hearing first? Okay, so we're gonna continue the public hearing to the September fifth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. All in favor? That disposes of that.
Who made that motion? I'm sorry.
Jamie did.
Madam Chairman, I have a request of the staff. I would like to, uh, receive a copy, because I didn't attend the first meeting. I'd like to receive a copy of the request for change to the zoning, and any pertinent memos that have been written by the staff.
Hasn't been much, but. No, that's okay.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to have copies of that material. I don't have any of it right now.
Okay, I believe Rhonda will be sending it out all again for next meeting, so I, we should be getting those.
Okay, well.
But I will make sure.
Okay, and, and if you could do it a little bit before the meeting, uh, like today, today is when I received the packet for tonight's meeting.
Okay, yeah, I will make mention of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Planning and zoning admin, I'm sorry, Barb?
Yeah, um, I abstained on that vote.
Okay.
Cause it is an action by the town council.
Three, four, five, five zero one. And planning and zoning administrators report.
The only thing I have is that there is a non-meeting with town council before the September fifth meeting, that is at five thirty downstairs in the community development office, I believe. Again, that is five thirty on September fifth, and then we will have our regular scheduled meeting at six thirty.
Everybody's noted and will be noticed.
The non-meeting will not be noticed, but yes.
But we'll, we'll.
Yes, you'll get an email and stuff, yep.
Yep.
If you didn't already, yes.
Yep. All right. We have minutes.
Legal counsel.
It's with legal counsel, yes. Planning board minutes of Tuesday, July eighteenth. Who likes them? Barb, is that a motion?
Yep, ma'am.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Colleen. All in favor?
Hi.
One, two. One, two, three.
I'm abstaining, please, Madam Chairman.
One, two, three, four, four zero two. To approve.
And I have a question on the, if we could, on page eleven, uh line one. Mister Thompson read, Mister Price, we had portions of a memo from To- Tim Thompson to explain the zoning ordinance amendments. That's one of the, the thing, there's a little asterisk there. I'm not sure why, but.
The asterisk goes down to line twenty-two, which referenced that a copy of the memo, which was read by Robert, is available for town to view.
Oh, that's one of the things that I asked for.
Yes, you will get a copy of that.
We got it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And last item on the agenda.
Oh, there, oh, there's one other typo on that same line, if you've gone, if you're gonna make any changes there. It's, it was July seventh, twenty twenty-three, I think, and not July seventh, uh two thousand, two oh, well, two hundred and three. That's just while you're there, you know.
Yeah, we got a, we got an extra zero in there. Minor details. That's Scribner's corrections. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will. So move.
Thank you. A second? Barb? Anybody opposed?
No, I'm in favor.
All in favor?
All in favor, yeah.
Where are we gonna adjourn to?
Thank you.
Did you bring a shirt? Cool.